Good morning, I'd like to call the November 4th, 2010 Board of County Commissioners meeting to order, and if you will all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Commissioner Bernard is out of the office and will not be in attendance today, but we do have Erica Allison here with us, who is on the Housing Authority Board, and we are going to actually move the Housing Authority Consent Agenda up to the first thing on our agenda quickly, if that's alright with the Board, and I will ask for a motion to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Great, I move for approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
That's been moved by Commissioner Allison and seconded by Commissioner Leininger that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it and the motion is approved, thank you. And Erica, congratulations on your new job, that's why we moved this up so that you could get back, because this is your lunch hour now, but very much appreciated and congratulations. You are now excused. We'll move on to reading and adoption of a land use ordinance, we have Dan Chandler from County Council here to help us with this.
Good morning, Dan Chandler, Assistant County Counsel. This is ZDO 229, this is a somewhat unusual ordinance, so I'd like to explain it a little bit. As the Board knows, the list of uses allowed and not allowed in exclusive farm use zones is generally constrained by state law, and the provisions of the county ordinance generally just track the state statutory provisions. In the last legislative session, the legislature changed, that made some minor changes to that list of uses, some changes to the rules for model airplane parks, a few changes to the rules for rural schools, they've gone from being an outright use to a conditional use, with some requirements that they be intended to serve a rural population. But because those changes in state law are really mandatory on the counties, the legislature did us the favor, and all the other counties, of allowing the adoption of an ordinance to reflect these changes without a public hearing and without any findings, and that's what we're here to do this morning. There were some procedural requirements, notice to DLCD, they had to approve that we did it right, and then DLCD in turn provides notice to people on its list, we've done all of those things, and ZDO 229 reflects those changes, and we're here to move your, ask for your adoption.
Great, thank you. Does the Commission have any clarifying questions on this code change? No, alright, and then I will ask for a motion to read ZDO 229 by title only.
Chair Peterson, I move reread zoning and development ordinance number 229 by title only.
Have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Austin and seconded by Commissioner Lee Han, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it and the motion is approved. Mary, will you read the ZDO 229 by title only?
Sure, this is ordinance number ZDO 229, and ordinance amending section 401 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance.
Great, thank you. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ZDO 229. Yep.
Chair Peterson, I move we adopt zoning and development ordinance number 229, amending section 401 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance as presented by staff today.
Second.
Yes, it's been moved by Commissioner Austin and seconded by Commissioner Lee Han, any further discussion then? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion is approved. Thank you, Dan, for all your work on that. We are now onto presentations, we have two presentations today, and the first one is proclaiming November 2010 as Family Caregivers Month in Clackamas County, therefore the bands, I guess, that were left at our spots, and we have Galena Burley from Clackamas County Volunteers Connection, ready to come up. Thanks, Galena.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're here today to ask your approval to recognize November 2010 as the National Family Caregiver Month. I am here on behalf of Brenda Durbin with Social Services Division and Department of Health, Housing and Human Services. As you know, this is an annual recognition, and it is sponsored by National Family Caregiver Support Program. This year is the 10th anniversary of the national program, as well as our program here in Clackamas County. Our theme this year is "I Am Family Caregiver: Ask My Story," and your bracelet says exactly that. National Family Caregiver Month presents an opportunity for families, nonprofit organizations, and governments to work together and celebrate these very special, wonderful people. Many of us know them, many of us are family caregivers. Every day in every community, caregivers assist friends, relatives, and loved ones with daily tasks, including personal care and homemaking. The Family Caregiver Support Program allows individuals to remain with their families as long as they can and have a quality of life. Family Caregiver Program here in Clackamas County provides a number of resources to family caregivers who reside in our community. We have respite care services, we do a lot of educational workshops, and most importantly, we serve as a resource network and support network for many of our families in this need. I would like to mention the phone number for record, anyone interested in the program, including those who want to volunteer or those looking for services, could call us at (503) 650-5724. (650) 5724. I would like to now read the proclamation. Whereas November is National Family Caregivers Month, a time to honor, thank, support, assist, educate, and celebrate our nation's more than 65 million family caregivers and 360,000 family caregivers in Oregon. Whereas family caregivers are the foundation of the long-term care network nationwide and here in Clackamas County. Whereas 87% of all family caregivers provide an average of 20 hours per week caring for chronically ill, disabled, or aged family members, or friends, and 13% of the family caregivers provide 40 hours or more per week. Whereas family caregivers experiencing extreme stress have shown to age prematurely, this level of stress can take as much as 10 years off of a family caregiver's life. At least 70% of family caregivers identify health issues such as high blood pressure, depression, insomnia, heart problems, and diabetes as being directly related to their role as a family caregiver. Whereas Clackamas County Family Caregiver Support Programs are entering their 10th year of existence in serving family caregivers in the county and have provided services to over 6,000 family caregivers in that decade. Whereas Clackamas County Employees Assistance Program is to be commended, a component which supports county employees who serve as family caregivers through education, family, medical leave, resources, and referrals. Now therefore, do I read that part? Okay, "We, the Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby declare that Clackamas County will observe the entire month of November 2010 as Family Caregivers Month and urge all citizens to take part in activities and observance designed to increase awareness and understanding of caregiving and to encourage citizens to volunteer their time to assist caregivers in their community." We have, excuse me, we have here in to set our hands and cause the seal of the county of Clackamas to be affixed here to on this fourth day of November 2012. 2010, I rushed ahead, 2010, but we'll come back in 2012.
Alright, cool. Well, thank you, thank you very much. Why don't we have a motion to approve the proclamation, and then if there's comments, we can do that?
Chair Peterson, I move we approve the proclamation.
Have a second?
Yes.
I second. It's been moved by Commissioner Lee Han and seconded by Commissioner Leininger, any further discussion? Commissioner Lee Han?
Yes, I would just say, having been a family caregiver for about 10 years, and I say about because I don't really know, and I think this is one of the issues with family caregivers, is that they don't really self-identify, because the nature of being a family caregiver goes from helping out the way you help out all family members now and then, particularly with an older individual, to all the way to a 24/7 through many crisis situations, and so on your way to getting there, you're not sure when you became one. But clearly towards the end, you are one, in the case of elderly people or relatives that need help, and so that's one of the challenges, I think, is reaching out to people who, where they have gradually come into this role over a decade or more, and it is a big job, and I think a lot of times they don't recognize, the caregiver themselves don't recognize how gradually they've taken on more and more responsibility and more and more stress, as you say, not only for the care of the individual, but often negotiating the rest of the family dynamic as those responsibilities and decision-making things change and shift, and it's an ongoing process with, particularly with the elderly population. So I have a great deal of regard for family caregivers and all the work that they do for their families and really for the rest of the community.
Any other comments?
Well said.
Yes, I completely agree. So with that, if there isn't any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it and the motion is approved. Thank you, thank you to all our staff for all that you do, and reaching out to the community and helping these folks through this time, so thank you. Okay, our second proclamation this day is proclaiming November 2010 as Mediation Month in Clackamas County. I thought, when I first looked at it, it was Meditation Month, which we would all need during the month of elections, but no, it's Mediation Month in Clackamas County, and we have Lauren McNeil here to help us with this proclamation.
Great, that's a common misunderstanding, and actually, we think there's an awful lot of overlap. So, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, members of the county administration, and assembled guests, my name is Lauren McNeil, and I am here to request that you proclaim November as Mediation Month in Clackamas County. I'm also here with Amy Cleary, and Ellen Crawford, and Matthew Hartman, and we represent the breadth of conflict resolution opportunities in Clackamas County. I am here from Family Court Services, and we actually have some exciting news to tell you this year, which is that the Community Dispute Resolution Program has become part of Family Court Services, which allows us to share resources and more broadly meet the needs of the community. In Family Court Services, we've been in existence for over 30 years, providing domestic relations mediation for folks who are, who have a family law-related dispute, like custody, or parenting time, spousal support, child support, those sorts of things, and we help people with the assistance of a neutral mediator work through and come to some resolution that research has shown people stick to much more readily than plans that are imposed by a third party like a judge. We also have an exciting collaborative project with the Juvenile Department this year, and so they're gonna, Ellen and Matthew will talk to you a little bit more about that, but we're very excited about the ways that we are not only practicing conflict resolution and mediation, but modeling those exact practices and values in the way that we work together. I have a couple of quotes from clients that I want to share with you of late. "You were an amazing resource, and what I learned will continue to help me in future relationships." This is something we take very seriously, that we are not just helping people resolve the dispute at hand, but also help them learn how to resolve conflict better in the future. "The mediator was great, given the circumstances, I was amazed at how much progress we were able to make." "The mediator has a great deal of patience, equanimity, and flexibility, his pleasant and calm demeanor and ability to see alternative solutions to my family's problems proved to be really helpful." Another one, "I feel that our mediator was unbiased and concerned for both parties, he was empathetic, caring, informative, and was able to quickly calm or help keep us both calm when an issue could have made one or both of us upset. He did a really good job helping both of us to see where the other was coming from and why we felt as we did." And the last, and something really important for all of us at Family Court Services, "This mediator was able to reestablish a mutual ground for us to concentrate on the truths of the matter and decide what best serves our child." I'm pleased to let you know that Clackamas County has demonstrated leadership in alternative dispute resolution for many, many years, and in particular in times of great distress, thinking about how to approach conflict is very important, and we in the field think that it provides us a great, lots of opportunity for creative resolutioning, so we think we do that here, and we are happy to share that with you. And Ellen and Matthew?
Thank you. I'm Ellen Crawford, I'm the Director of the Juvenile Department in Clackamas County, and first I'd like to thank all of the Commissioners for your support in proclaiming November as Mediation Month in Clackamas County. The Juvenile Department, as you know, handles over 2,000 cases referred to the department each year, all of those youth are referred for committing different types of criminal activity, and as we know, all those occurrences impact the community and individuals who are their victims. Our department mission includes holding youth offenders accountable and facilitating victim and community restoration. We have opportunities that are provided to repair harm to the victims and the community through our victim offender dialogues. This last year, we have reorganized our services, and this is the exciting partnership that Lauren was referring to, we formed a partnership with the Family Court Service to provide victim offender dialogues. What used to be a service provided by one full-time physician is now provided through a collaborative partnership in which we have enhanced service levels, we're utilizing trained volunteer mediators from each agency, and we're sharing the use of professional staff to provide cross-training between the agencies. This is a pilot project through the end of June, with the hope of demonstrating improved service delivery, enhancing opportunities for victim restoration, and successful collaboration through blending resources, shared training, and greater efficiency of our service delivery. Matthew Hartman, who is present today, I'd like to introduce, we hired earlier this year, he has a strong background in restorative justice, and he has really taken the lead in this collaborative effort with the Family Court Service. Matthew would like to also speak briefly regarding these enhanced services for victims and the collaboration with the Family Court Service. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen, good morning. Basically, we're planning on an incremental implementation of this program as a pilot with Family Court Services. Our goal is to build the capacity of the program to meet the participation and involvement needs, ideally of all citizens of Clackamas County that are affected by juvenile offenses. There has been a lot of research done on victim offender dialogues, and we also have a sophisticated monitoring evaluation program that's going to be in place, and our hopes are to show benefits, a few, just to mention a few, things like victims showing lower anxiety of being revictimized after going through a victim offender dialogue, showing an increase in satisfaction with the justice system, offenders will have lower recidivism, and youth will fulfill a higher percentage of their restitution obligations to the victims that they've harmed. So we're very excited about this program. Thank you.
Amy?
Good morning, it's nice to see you again, Commissioners. I'm Amy Cleary, the Program Coordinator for the Clackamas County, let's see, I have to remember our new name now that we've moved to Family Court Services, Family Court Services, Community Dispute Resolution Services, and we're very happy to be now engaged with the sort of collection of mediation services that are being provided in Clackamas County, and we are very well-known, actually, generally speaking, for the work that we do in Clackamas County, so we really appreciate all the support that you give us in that, and also the proclamation that you're putting in place today. We have, generally, we deal with neighbor-to-neighbor issues, but we've been branching out a little bit more in that now, because people are asking for more services from community mediation. We are engaging in a lot of facilitations for groups, and helping people to have reasonable conversations out in the community that allow them to think through their problems and work collaboratively to get to a place where they can agree to utilize resources well, or be able to agree to how they're going to live next door to each other. The Community Dispute Resolution Center work, also provides a workplace, mediation services within the county, and to businesses in the community. We do outreach and education, which involves going out and letting people know that we're here, the neighbor-to-neighbor services are free to residents of the county, and if people don't know about them, you know, it's hard for them to access them, so we find every opportunity we can to get the word out and let them know that the services are available. We also get referrals to our program through the Sheriff's Department, through community environment, through the code enforcement complaints that they get. We're continuing to provide barking dog services, mediation services in barking dog complaints. Department of Transportation and Development has found ways of getting some challenging and complicated things to us that are involving planning, engineering, land use, and boundary and easement disputes, so we work with multi-parties as well as individual neighbors to help them find resolution. We provide a training every year for our basic mediation class, and it's in April this year, from the 5th through the 9th, and we will be putting information up on our website regarding that. There are also some things going on around the state, we are involved with the Oregon Mediation Association by way of my being the President of that association this year, and have had a wonderful experience networking with other people in the state that provide mediation services, not just the community programs, but also private practitioners and public policy mediators. Our OMA Conference, our Oregon Mediation Association Conference is tomorrow and Saturday, and if anybody's interested, you can still sign up, it's being held at the Ombrege Center in Portland, and that information can be found on the OMA website. Today, we're hosting the Oregon Association for Community Dispute Resolution Centers next door in the Developmental Services Building, and there are 20 programs around the state of Oregon that provide community services as similar to the ones that we provide here in this county, and we'll be talking about different things that we have in common and sharing information in our meeting today. We enjoy being able to bring collaborative processes to people and find that when they're able to do that, even though collaboration can take a little longer, that they come up with some successful agreements, and those agreements tend to be more lasting. So if people would like to find out more about our program, our phone number is (503) Our contact information has not changed, even though our location has changed, so that's easy, it's easy to reach us, again, it's (503) 655-8500. Thank you for the time that we've had with you this morning.
Thank you, Amy, thank you, everybody. Why don't we, I'll ask for, no.
Shall I read it?
Yes, please, read the proclamation, then I'll ask for a motion.
Okay, here we go. "Proclaiming November 2010 as Mediation Month in Clackamas County. Whereas residents of Clackamas County can choose mediation with assistance from volunteer, court-affiliated, and private mediators as a first resort to peacefully resolve their own conflicts, which promotes safer communities, schools, and families, saves time and money, and creates better outcomes for everyone. And whereas the Clackamas County Commissioners join Oregon's Governor, Attorney General, and Chief Justice in their commitment to the use of mediation for problem-solving and dispute resolution, making Oregon a leader in providing statewide integrated approaches to the effective resolution of community, court, and public policy disputes. And whereas a wide variety of organizations provide and support mediation and dispute resolution services to the citizens of Clackamas County, including Family Court Services and the Juvenile Department Victim Offender Dialogue Program. And whereas the 24th Annual Conference of the Oregon Mediation Association will be held November 5th and 6th in Portland. Now therefore, the Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of November 2010 to be Mediation Month in Clackamas County, and encourage all citizens to join us in this observance." They did this day of, the fourth day of November 2010.
Thank you for finishing that out. I'll ask for a motion, and then we'll have some discussion.
Chair Peterson, I move we accept the proclamation proclaiming November 2010 as Mediation Month in Clackamas County.
Thanks, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lee Han and seconded by Commissioner Austin, is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Leininger.
Do we have any data that shows, outcome data on our mediation programs that the county runs, not mediation in general, that shows the benefit to the community in terms of things like cost savings, or violence prevented, or engagement in the criminal justice system prevented?
We do, we collect that data and report it periodically, mostly related, in our world, mostly related to judge time, how much judge time is saved by virtue of people resolving their disputes in mediation. Yep.
I think it would be really interesting, as we move forward with such a financially-constrained time, if there were a way that you could educate me at least on how our investment, you know, in the budget, in these services in the county saves money in other county costs, that would be wonderful to learn more about.
Sure, we'd be happy to do that.
And one of the things that we're able to do, Commissioner Peterson, is we are also as a state, collecting information from each of the community programs, indicating if people were not able to participate in mediation, what they would have done otherwise, and so the survey information shows how many people think they would have gone on to go to court, which is a more expensive process. Also, we're utilizing volunteer mediators, I forgot to mention that. Our staff is less than two FTE, and the volunteers that work with us are putting in a significant amount of time. We had, let's see, we, how many volunteer hours, we had, 27 active volunteer mediators who gave 1,096 hours last year, last fiscal year, and so we can calculate how much the value of that is, and this happens around the state, but particularly here also, and we can also talk to each of the program, the people who are referring cases to the programs, the Sheriff's Department, code enforcement, dog services, and if they were, you know, spending their own staff time on this, it would be significantly more than it is when we're utilizing our volunteers.
Yeah, thank you. I think that that's really the ounce of prevention that the Board is focused on, is, you know, putting the upfront time and energy in at this level before it gets to be this level, and costly at the end for everybody involved, and also can result in a lot of other issues coming out between domestic violence, or bad behavior, or other things, so the time spent upfront is worth it, especially with the types of volunteers and the types of staff that we have, putting in that energy is helpful, and I know that we've trained a lot of people out in the Clackamas County community and beyond, who have then taken that and helped other jurisdictions and other folks learn how to bring those types of mediation skills into their organization, so that it doesn't just go, well, there's no assumption, it's just going to go to the costly legal outcome. And I was always thinking here too, of the election and, you know, big government versus small government, there's a lot of things that we shouldn't be involved in, but we can help facilitate a good outcome before it gets to the point where we become involved, and I think that's part of what we're talking about here, is how much, you know, how much government involvement do we want, because when it gets to that point, it is costly, it does escalate, and so just allowing us to be that facilitator beforehand may allow us not to be involved.
Yeah, that's a very good point, because mediation does engage people, if we can get engaged them early on.
If we can engage them early on and empower them to be their own problem solvers, then they're not as likely to have to engage in more expensive processes.
Commissioner Leehan, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to reiterate the commitment that Clackamas County has to the whole mediation process, both family dispute resolution and neighbor-to-neighbor, neighborhood kinds of issues, and encourage people to take advantage of them before a situation escalates to the point of either making you miserable all the time, or to the point of getting more involved in actions, like has been said, that are more expensive for you and more expensive for the larger community. So don't sit around and be miserable when there's something you can do.
Any further comments? All right, now I'll ask for a motion to approve the proclamation.
We already had a motion.
Oh, I already had it. Thank you, Mary.
I just needed to vote it.
I just needed the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you both for coming in today from juvenile. All right, we are on to the part of our agenda of citizen communication, and I do not have anybody signed up with any blue cards, and I don't see anyone rising to come forward from the audience. So we'll move on from citizen communication to our consent agenda, seeing that we have no discussion items for today, and I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Chair Peterson, I move we approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lenninger, a second by Commissioner Leehan, that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion on any of the items? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thank you. We're on to Commissioner Communication. And I guess I just wanted to start this one out and acknowledge that we had an election two days ago, that while a lot of it is not final, and things are still kind of moving around, there looks like there's going to be a lot of change, not only in the state, but also in Clackamas County. And as I was driving in today, OPB was doing a point-counterpoint of, you know, how the elections had turned out, and it was all about basically laying the partisanship aside at this point, and getting the work of, what they were talking about, the state done, and how purple Oregon is, not blue, not red, that there's, in Oregon, 38% identified themselves as independent, even though that they had to register in order to be part of a primary. And how, you know, 38%, that's a giant independent that is really, truly saying, hey, listen, you know, we want you to lay that aside. And so I think as we move forward, we're hoping that at every level, we can lay that aside and get down to work. And obviously, looking at our county administrator, one of those biggest items coming up for not only the state, but for us, is the budget. And we're going to really need to focus in on the budget and how we prioritize things as the state makes their cuts, and then we have to implement those programs at a significantly lower level of revenue, but also finding ways to be more efficient, finding ways to, we always said, do more with less in Clackamas County, but I think it was two cycles ago that we had a citizen member said, this is the first time I've seen Clackamas County do less with less. So we really are on a downward trend in terms of being able to provide a level of service for those who are in need during a recession as that need increases, which is a very difficult time to be an elected official, because that prioritization is difficult. And so with that, with the change that's coming, I know that Commissioner Austin had done an awesome job with his race, as did his opponent, but it looks like we will have change there. And you have done such an awesome job that I just wanted to acknowledge all of the work that you have done on behalf of the board, and you still have two months left.
You do.
And we have a lot of work to do.
That's for certain.
So thank you for all of that, and this isn't a goodbye, it's just an acknowledgement, and we'll be looking forward to the next two months and whatever else you can work with us on, because your work at the national level on sustainability measures is going to be really important to Clackamas County as we move forward, and how we keep you involved, and how we make sure that your professional background, as well as your commitment to Clackamas County, is maintained. So thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Do we have any other comments on the election? Commissioner Lenninger, or Commissioner Austin?
Well, I just wanted to point out, I just wanted to follow up on your points, too, Chair Peterson, because after attending about three different economic forums over the last couple of weeks, we heard, a lot of us attended the same forums, or some of us did at least, and I just heard a lot of really, really depressing news in terms of how long it's going to take, what the issues are, but there are always opportunities for working together. And so I think that's going to be a theme, you know, lay aside the partisanship and basically see all sides work together to try to solve our common problems. Otherwise, I don't think people are really happy, or have been happy, with the lack of civility and all of the rancor and ill behavior of folks all around, I think, on all sides. So I'm hoping that this is an opportunity to do better, to figure out how to meet our best needs, the highest and best needs, whether it's, you know, education, getting dollars for those folks, and infrastructure, jobs back running. Some of the economic indicators say it might be a while before we get there. So I think the challenges are great for all of us, so making sure we don't lose those folks that are most in need right now, that need job retraining, that need assistance while they're looking for work, families, juveniles, youth, we just can't let those go by the wayside. So I'm hoping that this is a great opportunity for all of us, and I've enjoyed my time here. I know there's still a few more votes to count, and I'll be watching very frantically, but I think that's where it's heading right now. But I've enjoyed my time here, and we'll definitely be probably a little bit freer to do some other things, too, which I have a lot of interest in. So really appreciate the collaborative nature of this board.
Alligator wrestling?
Well, I'm going to leave that by the wayside. It's come in handy a few times, though. But I've really enjoyed, again, the collaborative nature of this board, how we can agree on the important issues, and may have some disagreements, but I think we've moved the county ahead, and I'd love to see the county continue to move in the right direction, too. So thanks for the opportunity.
Commissioner Lenninger?
Thank you. Well, I think this has been a very rigorous and felt kind of long election cycle, and we're now at the end of it, and while it's difficult to see friends have outcomes in their races that may be different from what they were hoping for, I think the fundamental point that we are carrying away is, we're really all in this for the same reason. We're all in this to make our community stronger. And so whether or not we all voted for the same people on Election Day, now is the time to set that aside, and I think this board is very committed to, I speak only for myself, I'm very committed to welcoming, in Clackamas County, the new leaders who are going to be stepping in, even as I salute leaders who've worked hard and may be stepping into a new opportunity in the future. So, thank you.
Commissioner Leehan?
Yes, I would echo all the things that were said in regards to the campaign, but I actually was going to report on something different.
Really? Something else happened?
Having been fortunate enough myself to not be in an election cycle this time, but I know how stressful it is for everyone, no matter what the outcomes are, it's extremely stressful. And I think the public doesn't appreciate as much how much anyone who runs for an office puts themselves and their whole, I mean, their whole self, their whole ego out there for everyone to take potshots at it. So whether you are on the winning or the losing side of any particular campaign, I think people need a lot of thanks from the community, and just for putting themselves on the line the way they do. But on my other topic, I did want to report that LCDC, the Land Conservation and Development Commission, concluded their deliberations last week on the reserves process, the urban and rural reserves process, and ended up approving all of Clackamas Counties and all of Multnomah Counties. And I think we, in the whole process, Clackamas County got a lot of kudos for how well we followed Senate Bill 1011, both technically and in the spirit of the law. So I was very pleased with that outcome, and proud of the work that Clackamas County and Clackamas County citizens had done through that whole two-year process. They were very engaged and really did excellent work, and that showed in the outcome. The Washington Counties was remanded, some major sections of it were remanded, and that in itself will hold up the urban growth boundary expansions, perhaps until the spring, that were anticipated to occur by the end of this year. Urban growth boundary expansions, perhaps for the whole region, will be held up until next spring because of that remand. But even though it didn't involve Clackamas County, it's, we are peripherally involved because we're a part of the region, so. But just like the election, the fallout of the LCDC decision is still being debated and analyzed as we go forward, and we'll know more in a week or two.
Commissioner Austin, any other comments? No?
All right, I think, no. It was a heck of a week.
Yeah. Commissioner Lenninger?
I just wanted to quickly report that yesterday, yesterday we had a meeting with all of the interested hamlets, villages, I'm not going to get everybody, cities, ports, transit districts, national forest interests, a whole host of people, and Oregon Department of Transportation, on the first meeting to look at formation of an area commission on transportation for unincorporated rural parts of Clackamas County, Hood River, and East Multnomah County. And there was a lot of excitement in the room on moving forward. You all were there at the discussion that we had with the villages of Mount Hood, where Jason came to, Jason Tell, the manager of Region One, came out to talk about area commissions on transportation with the folks out there with us. And so this is the next step in trying to get towards a bylaws adoption by the Oregon Transportation Commission. This is only one of two areas in the state that doesn't have an area commission on transportation, which is essentially a body that is acknowledged by the Oregon Transportation Commission to be making local decisions about maintenance, safety, preservation projects with the regional directors of the Oregon Department of Transportation, that then gets forwarded up to the OTC. So it's a bottoms-up approach rather than a top-down, and it's working throughout the state in different forms of membership and processes, each one locally decided on. And we're looking at whether we can give our rural economy and citizens and folks more of a voice in education and just basic information on what projects ODOT is looking at doing in their community. And there was a lot of discussion about both the ag lands, as well as the rural cities, as well as the national forest. And the national forest is a huge part of Clackamas County, and they actually had already proposed their own act bylaws. They were going to move ahead and create their own act, because it was so important to them, because of the multimodal work that they're doing to try to get people up to the mountain, because they have 5 million visitors a year, mostly from Multnomah and Clackamas Counties, who spend $55 million in the national forest, and they're trying to manage that impact, and they weren't able to do that alone. So they were looking at forming an act, while at the same time, our hamlets and villages were moving forward on proposing bylaws for the same area, doing the same thing, only from a different perspective. So what we're doing is just trying to bring everybody together, and that really has impact from the ports to the transit districts, to everybody, to get their feedback. And there's a lot of folks who are going to be, want to be involved in this, and a lot of range of, from everybody saying, well, I'm only involved in this because I want a signal in my downtown, to a lot of worries about what this will do in terms of putting up a barrier maybe to their good relationship with Oregon Department of Transportation. And I think we'll be able to deal with all of those issues through this process, which is great. So, thank you for the support to all of those folks in moving that forward. And if there's no further business, Commissioner? No? All right, then we are adjourned. Thank you.